Justice Rowan.
Thank you, everyone, for joining this evening.
Get yourself in.
All right. So we do have a quorum tonight. Everyone is here. A couple of housekeeping topics, please. Obviously, just to let you know, we are recording all meetings. And if you do speak, come to the podium, state your name for the record, just so folks at home will know as well. And there will be two chances to speak, and we'll let you know when those happen, and you'll come up to the podium for those. So I will call for other business. If anybody has anything to add, I do have a couple. Anybody have anything before I jump in? And so we'll need to discuss the workshop items under other business, as well as a thank you letter to the city of Woodlock. All right, so we will go ahead and jump on, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'm motioning that we approve the consent agenda.
Right, moved by Kathy and seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? All right, and we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that being said, we'll jump down into department reports, starting with police. What you got, Forrest? Chief?
Good evening. Me, Chief, so I want to tell my police department, I have twenty twenty-five calls for service as follows for June. One agency department assist, three alarm calls, two animal calls, one attempt to contact, two burglaries, four civil calls, one dispute disturbance, one fraud scam offense, one info theft, two information, general, juvenile, two nice complaints. One property lost found recovered, one protected custody, one sex offense, most suspicious persons, excuse me, two suspicious persons slash vehicles, two traffic other patrols, and two nine-one hangups, thirty-one for June, and a hundred and eighty-seven total for you. If I'm not here by the time we get to new business resolution, the surplusing of the time that I'm in favor of that.
Sure, you guys, I think you don't want to bag her.
Yeah. I've had four work weeks.
Two.
Oh, that's just a four.
Two.
They're top two.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, we did keep you guys a little busy this month.
Well, I think I've got a hundred and thirty for Woodlock, so not that long.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You can do it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to City Hall.
All right, I took a bunch of reports that I attached for council. And the RMSA loss prevention grant is complete. We had the rest of our work done on the trees at the park. And the water line replacement project, and we're initiating the process. We need to get with Public Works and have them get us some dimensions, so that's what we need in order to get you that bid that you're looking for. And so I'll work directly with them, and then I will work with Mike from Gray and Osborne, and we will determine the most appropriate grant opportunity. I did meet with him and went over several grants that we will be starting. Some of them are in the packets. And this should fall under an emergency grant, so it shouldn't be that difficult to get. And the Augusta Street sidewalk project. The TIB has identified a potential grant opportunity to improve pedestrian infrastructure along Augusta Street, specifically from third to fifth. So they are going to be submitting some grants for that. And there's a chipso grant that they are also submitting for us, and the list of those are also in your packet. And an update to Eric's request for the water sewer overages. We were under the impression that the overages were going to be shown on the bills. After this last bills went out, we noticed that they weren't, so Sarah was on the phone with them today, and she just wrote up a quick brief. It says, following the April billing cycle, we requested that Visions update the utility bills to reflect the overage freeze within the water consumption section. However, during the June billing cycle, it was noted that this update had not been implemented as expected. Instead, Visions added a section combining both the flat rate and overage fees into a single line item. Today, Sarah spoke with Visions and will be working with them to have these fees separated for clearer billing. The correction will be confirmed prior to the next billing, and she actually completed everything she needed to today, and then Visions confirmed that it should reflect on the next billing cycle, so. That's all I got. Any questions?
Well, if no questions, we'll go ahead and move into public works.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jay Crowe, the Public Works Assistant. The past few weeks, most of our daily procedures and testing were performed without any major issues. This cycle was kind of half and half. John just got back this last Monday. Before that, we did have a minor problem with our primary wells' auto function not operating correctly. We consulted with Rod from Woodlock Water Sewer, and he gave us our contact that he has with Traverse Electric, and they came out and made it repair pretty swiftly. There was no downtime for water. It was an electrical issue. Something that we would not have been able to figure out as long. As far as inventory goes, we have had some small shop things been added to our inventory list, but that is mostly just kind of Connor learning the I-Work system. We have kind of increased our training with Connor, as we are now anticipating him to be a full-time employee in the coming months. So not a big inventory push. We're still planning for that after the Cheese Days event, but there was some notable progress. They may even see some minor rises themselves. For the other section, we painted most of the yellow curbs in the downtown area. This week, we'll be able to finish off South Sixth Street from the elementary school. We did. We did along the school, but we still need the other side, and then there's a couple spots that we need to do with the cart. We mow and maintain the boat launch in our surrounding city-owned areas. We've started some extra weeding and head trimming of various minor areas in the city to prepare for Cheese Days. We have started our little street sweeps with our blower and mechanical broom attachment. Just really just cleaning up stuff. And as I mentioned before, we've started training Connor on a variety of tasks, but we've also included him on the daily water and sewer testing. So a little bit of everything this past cycle. But yeah, that's it. Cheese Days is fast approaching.
I have actually a Rachel question regarding the repair. Is he on our public works roster? Do we need to do something about that?
What do you mean?
Drivers lifting.
Yeah.
So it would be, well, I want to have it received the bill from them. So when we do, it's emergency work, so it's a little bit different, the way that process will work. It's still prevailing wages, you'll still have to go through all the steps, but emergency work doesn't, there's different stipulations for it, so. And I think we've actually used them before, so.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
Yeah, so they would be an approved vendor already.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Sorry, I don't look good. The paint looks good.
Thank you. Yeah, it is looking really nice down to me.
And good job on getting the well fixed while the the big guy was out of town.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so we will go ahead and jump into council reports. I did go over and attend the Egg Day Parade, walked in support of another fellow mayor. I did also, as a person and a citizen, wrote an endorsement letter for Mayor Spenson. So that was it was something that I definitely felt deeply about. He's done a lot to help us, so I thought that was something that was well worth doing. That is pretty much all that I have. Just looking forward to Cheese Days. And we will go ahead and do what this Tony had to report.
Yes, Cheese Days is quickly approaching. Lots of traffic, the car show is on, there's also the auction at the car show again. Lots of, lots of activities going on. And on a side note, I did have friends stay at the campgrounds this past weekend. They had stayed two years ago, and they absolutely loved it. It was a great part and all that, and then this time they were not so thrilled because there were stickers all over their campsite, and they have a dog and a big dog, and she's a big baby, and they were not very happy about it, so. I did send it up to Rachel, that it was addressed. Just that our campground looked better in the past.
Okay.
And even I noticed when we had our Lions Day cleanup day that there was stickers written around them, and it said, oh, that's a lot. It's not a very good look when people come, they usually have kids and pets, and you know, you want to be able to run around barefoot, not worrying about kids stepping on things. Hopefully that'll get.
And that's like the sticker bushes, not the blackberries, right?
Well, the little
Yeah, little flat ones, yeah.
You know, pre-blackberry bushes, just started to grow up out of ground, and plumps with their, they were, they were all.
Okay.
That's all I have.
What's my turn?
Yeah, they should turn.
Let's see, I last, not this Sunday, but the week before Sunday, I torched the east sidewalk on, in front of Donna's and Nikki's, and sprayed and sprayed a diluted white vinegar and salt solution, and it's actually is seven days later, looking pretty good. I skipped one spot because it wasn't in the shade. So I can kind of see how that's changed compared, and so it's looking like that's working. And if we did twenty percent white vinegar, I think it would do pretty well. So if that's something, it didn't take me long at all. I was probably out there forty-five minutes, fortunately. And this Sunday, Cindy and I worked on the AV system, so we've, we've, we've been having problems where the audio drops out, so that people can't, when they try to watch it, can't hear what we're saying, so we replaced the audio portion of the system and simplified it a little bit, and I think that's going to work well. That's about it.
Thank you very much for that. I know that's been quite the headache, and this left a lot of questions.
We're prepping it so that staff will be able to run the, run the because there's pretty much nothing needs to be done during the meeting, just sits and runs.
Yeah. Perfect. Right, and Rebecca?
Nothing to report.
It's Kathy.
Nothing to report.
Jamie?
I'm present.
Okay. All right, so we will move into committee reports. Do we have anyone from Planning Commission? No. No. Anyone that wants to speak on behalf of the park board? Nope. All right, we have no public hearing this afternoon, but we do have a special presentation. If you want to go ahead and come on up and introduce yourself.
Everybody. Got a packet here for each of you first. My name is Ashley Hamilton. I am from the Fairgrounds, and I am the Fairness Supporter. My history with the Fairgrounds, I'm the fourth generation of being out there. Personally, I have been a 4H exhibitor, the 4H rabid KDA superintendent, up until like April and the nine months. So in your cabinet there on the very top, we do have your opening ceremonies. That is your own ticket, and that's also a plus one. Please come out on Tuesday. We will start gathering at ten o'clock at the community events stage, and then eleven o'clock will be the ceremonies, and of course, at the end, we will have our big competition, so please be part of that. I will be passing out posters here in the coming days with information on each of the days. We will, of course, have Family Day, we will have Military Appreciation Day, Senior Day. All, all of ours will be there. This year, we will have the rodeo for two different evenings. That'll be Wednesday and Thursday evening. Coming out in the rodeo this year, we do have the rodeo queen. We are extending the rodeo queen applications until August fourth. Our rodeo queen, we come from Livingston, Thurston, Grace, Harbor, Cowlitts, and Pacific. So if you know of any young ladies with horse skills and their own horse, if you come up for rodeo queen, the application is online, and we would love to have them do that. We also do have wellness friendly. Our living logo is currently online. You apply for that. We are looking for young girls between the ages of eight to ten, who have a cute personality and able to be at the fair all week and go to all the different communities and whatnot in our community. Some other fun things happening at the fair this year, we do have Space Force coming out. Super excited. That's the newest military branch. They're going to come out with a cargo trailer with a couple different games and simulators and stuff like that to get the community engagement, and the Marines are also bringing out the cargo trailer with some games on it. That's something very exciting, super fun. Benders, we're filling up, guys, so if you have any vendor spaces or booths that you're wanting to have for informational purposes, please reach out to me. Do you guys have any questions for me on the fair events side of things at all? I'm excited. Okay, I'd love to pass it off to Ross. He's going to talk with you guys about other things happening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ross Peterson. I'm the newest board member for the Southwest Washington Air Board. I really appreciate you folks, and so we'll let, let me just come in and share a little bit about the event. As you know, we're kind of a rural county, and there's lots of animals and kids and 4H and FFA happening, and we just want to ensure that the younger generations get involved in the fair earlier age, and, and it's a really good opportunity to go in and see different types of animals, see different types of agriculture, things that reflect our community. It's, it's always my favorite part to go in and see, you know, how proud kids are when they've worked so hard on caring for their animals and such, and I know a lot of you folks have kids or folks in your community. I took a look at upcoming events for your Cheese Festival, and we are also looking for talent, and I know we have the talent and frogs that jump. Although that should be really an exciting event, but I notice you have live music and perhaps some of the folks that you see in your festival, that might be a good encore performance for them to come to the fair, and can I share this with you and have you maybe post this somewhere, find somewhere and get posted or make a copy or two, and maybe share if folks are interested. We're still looking for entries for animals and things like quilts and that sort of thing, as well as talent. We just want to encourage everyone to come to the fair, and we hope to see you all there, and good luck with your event this coming weekend. Cheers.
Well, after we have done, I'm former county commissioner, and fundamentally, I'm on the fair for it, and I'm really enthused about fairs. My family's always been involved in fairs, and a little piece of trivia from my family, my mother was the oldest person to exhibit in two thousand eighteen. She put her hydrangeas in, and she got a first prize, and she was ninety-nine years old, so I'm pretty proud of her. So in your package, it probably see a coloring contest. So this is open to anybody, any age. We've went to schools earlier this year, but now we're coming to you. If you have a grandchild, children who'd like to get into the coloring contest, please have them submit by August first. It is a fun time, and there are prizes for that. So I think you guys are going to be pretty busy on July twelfth. But that is also fundraiser for the fair at Panda Express. So if you happen to be in town and you want something to eat, why don't you go to Panda Express, buy some food there, and part of the receipts will come to the fair. Any questions for us? How many of you have been to the fair? How many of you have been? How about the audience? How many of you have gone to the fair? Okay, you like the food?
No.
How about the ride? You go by? Do you like to look at some of the canned vegetables and wonderful fruit? Yes. So come on out to the fair, there's something for everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and move down to open it up for public comment on any of the agenda items. All right, we'll go ahead and jump into new business. We do have two new planning commission members that we're going to be swearing in.
People want to sneak out.
Yes. Yeah. I'll get this posted on our board, too.
Thank you so much.
Can we stop as they leave?
The Thursday.
Oh, dear.
All right, so the first one that we will be doing is Tracy. Come on up. Okay.
Am I getting out of the way?
You can come on over here. All right, you can do this. And I will have you repeat that.
Okay.
All right, so if I can have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tracy Sennelwinski.
Now.
Sennelwinski, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Planning Commission.
I do solemnly swear that I will do all those things that you said.
Actually, you have to say them.
Yep.
Oh, that's why I got the I, Tracy Sennelwinski, do solemnly swear to affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Planning Commission to the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States, the laws of the State of Washington, and the ordinance of, and regulations of the City of Toledo.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency, and fairness in all planning commission activities and decisions.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency, and fairness in all planning commission activities and decisions. I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
Welcome aboard, and I don't have people going to have a
Sorry, yours.
Yep. To go ahead. Sure. Help me pull that out. All right, and have you scroll that out, and we'll have to go back to Rachel when you're finished with it. All right.
Do you have an extra pen? Or do I need to do that right now?
By today's time, or later. Yes, I can grab you an extra pen in a sec.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, you can read it to Planning Commission if that's easier. All right, and then we will move on to Jacob.
Yeah. Not yet. I'll be back. Stay firm. Yeah. I'll tactically answer them. Yes.
Okay, they don't want to try and butcher it, and we'll get you. You're happy to follow up.
Yeah, because there's no way I couldn't.
I can either, don't worry. She's not going to a lot of these.
You got you.
Exactly. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jake Edmister, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Planning Commission.
I, Jacob Edmister, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the City of Toledo Planning Commission.
To the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States, the laws of the State of Washington, and the ordinance of, and regulations of the City of Toledo.
To the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States, the laws of the State of Washington, and the ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency, and fairness in all planning commission activities and decisions.
Will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency, and fairness in all planning commission activities and decisions.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
Welcome aboard. And while the time begins. And do you want them to go up, too? Have him. They give them both. I think I might be giving them. We'll get you something. Oh. I lied. Oh, I said, yeah. Okay.
Jake.
All right, so we will go ahead and move on from there to Resolution three thirty A. Resolution three thirty A, Resolution of the City Council, the City of Toledo, Washington, establishing a utility connection loading program to assist property owners with municipal water and sewer hookup charges.
That's a guy that this is, I have, please, all for.
Okay. Yes, please.
I'll make a motion. We accept Resolution three thirty A as written.
I'll second that, hopefully. Wait, it was motion by Eric and seconded by Kathy. Any discussion?
Yeah, I did need to make some changes to this. So the way the the bars manual works, I had to change the highlighted area for you guys. And it just talks about where the loan gets paid from. And then in the actual policy, again, it just, I updated it. So basically, the water sewer connection gets paid, it comes in as a revenue, and then we do a zero dollar invoice for the loan, and so now the loan becomes what's getting paid off and not the water sewer connection, and that keeps us straight with the auditors, and it doesn't it shows that a water sewer connection was done this year.
So does money go into the, into that fund that you're creating?
Yeah, so I would do the zero dollar invoice, a zero dollar transfer. And so the way our water sewers broken up, it's the general fund, the, or the four oh one, and then the four ten, there, there's a percentage, the way it's broken up. So that money will get paid into those funds, and then the loan gets paid back into the four oh one, so we'll, we'll carry the loan from the four oh one as a loan, and then they're paying back the loan. So that's what those two sections are.
Is the interest.
The interest goes, yeah, the interest will go into an interest bars that's allocated to the correct fund. And then the admin fee just goes into the general fund.
And, and so the, so the, when we give a loan, is the oh one getting made a hole out of the other funds, or does it wait for this ten years of incoming revenue?
No, so we'll carry the loan through the four oh one, so there is money that goes, a new connection, there's the cost allocation between the oh one, four oh one, and the four ten. Those are all going to get paid off, so the, the water sewer connection revenue gets paid in full, and then the four oh one will carry the loan, the four oh one gets the majority of the interest, and the oh one gets the admin fee.
Okay, great.
We're not putting out.
We're not putting out any money. Yeah, it's just the way the, the auditors and want to see the loans recorded, because it's not a water sewer connection that they're paying for every month. It's paid for at once, so it has to be.
But that does also pay for the headcount cost of, and, and there are, there are physical things that, what are those bow things called? Whatever, that you connect to.
Setters.
Setters. So there are costs that, that happen at connection time.
Right. So all of these fees that we were anticipating because of all the building, that would, could be subject to loans instead? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I, this is for residents that are already a resident of or, or
I think it's for existing connections.
Yeah.
So like if you bought a house that has the connection dropped on it and needed to
Right, or we have a resident right now that he's out of city limits. He has in-city water, but out-of-city sewer, and he wants to connect to our sewer. So he's doing all the infrastructure, but then he's going to want to connect to the sewer, so we can allow him to apply for a loan to pay off the sewer.
Oh, yeah, to answer your question, no, a builder's not going to come in and defer a hundred homes.
Right, and there's a lien that's placed on the building, so they wouldn't be able to do that anyways, because the minute they sold the building, the lien's going to get paid for. So.
Right, but if, if, say, we did grant developers that, they're already mortgage to the hill, just trying to make this development.
Yeah, the way it's worded, it's for existing.
Yeah, not for new builds.
And we can specifically put in there somewhere, if you guys want to say something that it's not for.
It opened all property owners. It's actually says, yeah, property owners, so it doesn't have, doesn't actually say.
Yeah, it's all legal property owners within the
for these utilities for the service.
Utility service, so that, to me, set big red flags, and I think that needs to be specified.
Okay, I can change.
Do you want to tighten that up and bring it back? Do you want to tighten that up and bring it back, or do you want to?
Um, I'd like, we've, so we've got a couple that I need to do, so if we could just amend it and then.
I'd really like to have the lawyer look at the wording to make sure we're not caught in the.
We already have one of these in place.
We do, and that's basically what this came off of. We were just paying for the infrastructure and not for the.
So that's not, so that's not going to mess up. Any of these short term ones, so you could bring it back? What, what Chad had to go with it?
Well, this came from Chad. Do we really want to have the attorneys look at it, or do we want to just? And actually, no, you know, Marissa did review this. Marissa did review this because I had a question about something. Or no, she reviewed the um. The uh, collection thing, never mind. That's, that's what I'm saying, you can amend it to say it's not for.
It's not, it's for existing structure.
We'll send it to Marissa, I can, but it's going to.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm, I'll make a, I'll amend by motion to include the wording in section two highlighted. And to add a third bullet to section four, which says for existing homes only.
Okay, excluding.
Section one B eligibility has got to be fixed too.
Yeah. Well, that's, no, it's section two B.
Of the resolution itself, it's, yeah, it's section.
Sorry, looking at the.
And the procedures is what he was.
Okay, so I'm further amending section two B to be all, all legal. Are existing, yeah, all legal property owners in city of existing buildings.
I'll second that.
Okay, amended motion was made by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Do we have any further discussion?
Thanks for catching me.
Do, do we have? Enough funds to cover?
I think because.
We're not paying out of pocket.
It's not, yeah, it's not, it's not that we have to extend the money, it's a very small portion of it, but there's of the physical cost. Yeah, the, the bulk of it is just, is just, we're deferring the need to pay for. Large tip item problems at the plant and the plant's doing pretty well on funding right now.
So you, so you also updated on purpose under sections both the eligibility.
Uh, that's actually the first thing I had said, yeah.
To go along with the actual resolution to A or B.
Yeah, but I think that this sheet is just for our information, right? This isn't actually part of the resolution.
It's the policy, yeah, it's the policy.
So you got the wording changes in the policy?
Any further discussion before I call for the vote?
I, I have a question. So what about people that are building their own homes, not developers? So we have a house going in. On Fourth Street by Grove Lane and it's one individual house. They're building it themselves, they just subdivided and they're going to want to apply for a water through a loan as well.
Um, so I could be, so owner occupied only, is that going to cover it? I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the real person.
Well, we're already saying, it's already, it's, we're already saying just for existing.
So we're, what we're having, what we're having happened, so I think we need to change that because we have some info going on.
It's going to be a problem.
So we have infield going on, so if somebody. So if we did owner, I think it's owner occupied, I think the intent is.
Help residents.
To help residents, not developers, not that I don't like developers, but that's a business for them, that's not, so.
What verbiage do we use then to specifically capture that meaning?
So we could say owner occupied?
All legal owner, I think, property owners within the city's utility service area.
That's what I originally had.
Owner occupied is the key there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Legal.
All legal.
Between legal and property is owner occupied.
Okay, so um. Have you checked what the current interest rates are?
Yes, and it states in there too that we would do at the time of signing the contract, we would look to see what the interest rate is that date. And that's what would be plugged in and that's what's currently in our fee schedule, how any of our loans work.
And it's based on the, it's based on the US Treasury ten, ten year rate?
So, but that day, so if we sign the contract tomorrow, it's going to be whatever it's on that website tomorrow.
Because that's available on the Fed website.
And it's updated daily.
Yeah, we did this a couple years ago when we set this up.
Is that the updated verbiage for that?
That's what the original verbiage was. I don't know if they want to add anything to it, but yeah, all property owners within the city.
Because a legal owner could be somebody that's renting.
Okay, let me clean this up again. So I'm, I'm, I'm amending the motion to again continue to include the changes on the highlighted. Sheet of the resolution we have and to under section two B. To change all legal property owners to all legal owner occupied property owners. And on the policy. Bullet two down in section four, advocate must be a legal owner occupied property owner. That's, that's on motion number.
Can I get a second on that?
Well, aren't we doing this one separately?
We don't.
That's the policy that goes with the resolution.
Do we need to do this one separately?
Yeah, they're attached, yes.
Would someone like to second Eric's amended motion?
Amended motion.
Alright, so the second amended motion was made by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Any further discussion before we call for the vote?
I'd like to have a second reading on this one.
Got it. Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so we will move on to the next, which is Resolution number three thirty one A. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Toledo, Washington. Declaring a two thousand and six Ford Crown Victoria Police sedan as surplus property and authorizing its disposal via public auction.
Since I'm the one that, that shows those for us to buy it, I think I'll make a motion to accept Resolution three thirty one A as penance.
Alright, then moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Me too.
Why are you looking at me? So. In reading it and maybe I skipped over it, are we removing the uh, police markings?
Absolutely, that has to be done before it goes to surplus, that's part of our policy.
Okay, because I didn't see anything in there and I went, wait a minute.
Yep, and I, um, I've already got someone that's gonna come de-badget for me. Thanks Eric. And I've already talked to Valentine and he's just going to come down and do a quick run through before those go to surplus, just to make sure everything's done.
Good.
Yes.
And my, uh, my input on this is, since you have an estimated value of greater than a dollar, I think that we should subtract what it costs us. What it costs us to have it and de-badget and split the difference with the mark. Since they sold it to us for a dollar and it doesn't feel right to make money if we do.
Yeah.
I have no idea what we're into it, we might be into it more than that.
So, uh. Do a P and L and split.
Yep.
After auction.
So what they gave it to us?
No, they sold it to us for a dollar, we thought we were going to make use of it and it turned out that. William's going to make use of it and then.
Alright, any further discussion before I call for the vote? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries.
There's the contract, that's what that, you guys are good with that. Yeah, it's just the auction contract.
Yeah.
It's, when we've used them before, it's the same.
Yeah, Rachel Beaver, is your name?
This started back when I was still a beaver.
Yeah.
It's been not long because it started with the bike. So the bike, the bike and the car are going to auction. They're going to Richie Brothers Auction, August, they're both going.
Okay, I'm just saying this is the legal contract.
Yes, we will have them updated.
Okay.
But I was a beaver at that time.
Alright, so we will move on to the next, which is ordinance number eight twenty five. An ordinance of the City of Toledo, Washington, establishing a park board, setting meeting times. Specifying terms of service for board members, defining powers and duties. And superseding ordinance number eight oh six.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance number eight twenty five as long as in section two. It says two of these members may be designated instead of one of these. Because it doesn't make sense to me otherwise.
So it's two members?
Yes, two of these members may be designated as citizen at large positions.
Setting speed, yeah.
Or up to two.
Up to two.
I think that word may, right?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Thank you. Now we can. Okay, so it's been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Tony. Do we have any more things that you would need to be changed?
So what is updated in this on that superseding?
That is. The way it was written was there needed to be a member from the Toledo Lions Club and Toledo, Toledo, yeah. And I believe one of those. Are not an actual committee anymore.
So we're just kind of.
So yeah, we're just changing it, yeah.
Broadening our base.
Yeah, it was worded wrong and I'm sure Kyle will speak on it then. Yeah.
So, since we're discussing, um, this is for. Both of our boards actually, could we request at least a written report on someone? From our boards? Whether there's anything to report or not, just checking in or say, we have nothing new or this is what we're working on.
Yes.
They have minutes.
Yeah, I can add minutes.
The minutes added to the first meeting of the month or the mid, mid bunk meeting or something, whatever.
I can do that.
The first meeting is kind of busy.
I'll do it to the second.
I've seen those in the past in the additional information.
I think we used to do them.
Anybody have any, any other things to note on this before we open, before we vote? Alright, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So next item is the Kent Olson cribbage board recommendation for the park board. I'm sure everybody had a chance to take a look at that proposal for X. If so, I would entertain a motion.
Do you need a motion to accept the recommendation? I can make a motion to accept the recommendation of the cribbage board for the park.
Been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Tony. Does anybody have anything that they want to note on that in regards to placement or anything? I, I like.
We'd say maybe under the trace loads more out of the weather, maybe it'll help it last a little more, I'm not sure.
And it's, I mean, it's kind of in the general vicinity of the, a few of the big ones, but. For the length of it, I know it's, you know, you don't want it to be too crowded and it does, from looking at the map and it, it should be caught on camera. For vandalism purposes and stuff, I wanted, you know, that's. Definitely want to make sure that it's, it's seen and nobody's out there messing with it, not just playing with it. If nobody has any objections to that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? We will move into unfinished business. Um, first up is the second reading for ordinance number. Eight twenty three and ordinance of the City of Toledo, Washington, amending sections of Toledo Municipal Code, Chapter one dash four. Concerning the procedure for passage of ordinance and publication of past ordinances. Amending sections of ordinance numbers four seven four and five one seven is necessary. And providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
I'll make motion to accept ordinance seven twenty three again. Oh, sorry, eight twenty three. Idiot right there.
Alright, it's been moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Is there any, any further discussion on this one? I know it's going to make our lives a little bit easier.
This is basically.
Because some things don't, don't need the.
With the, uh, with the code update, we're going to have a barrage of tweaks. That to, that are going to have to happen to make the new code changes fit. So it's, and, and also what were you saying that we're one of the few cities that actually does that?
Yeah.
And so, and actually saw an example of, we can, any of, any, any of council can say they want it read a second time, or if there's contention, it'll get read a second time. But there's also a, a list of things that are, have to be read twice, but simple things.
The one time.
So basically you're just simplifying the process.
Yeah, where it can be simplified.
Yeah.
Okay. Because after the eighth, whereas I just.
Alright, if there is no further discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Up next is ordinance number eight twenty four in ordinance authorizing the City of Toledo to utilize. A collection agency for the collection of delinquent accounts. Owing any debt to the city, establishing conditions and procedures for referrals and providing for the addition of flex. Collection fees to the debt owed. Entertain a motion?
Well, shouldn't we accept ordinance number eight two four?
Moved by Jamie and seconded by Tony. Do we have any discussion on this one?
Yeah, you guys approved the contract last, um, last meeting. This is the one that was reviewed by Marissa over at our attorney's office though, Jamie.
They're pretty steep.
It doesn't cost us.
Yeah, it costs this person.
Yeah, but they've got, they've got a month here and then they've got a month of grace, once it goes to collection, so they've got two months. Where they'll have no additional charges and then it gets crazy.
So, so we get paid in full and the. Indigenous person.
The person that's choosing not to pay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they do all the skip tracing, so people that move and we don't have a forwarding address, they take care of all of that for us, um.
And this is only for people that are no longer here, so this isn't going to happen for somebody who's laid on their water bill or something.
Right. Any further discussion before I call for the vote? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? We will go ahead and move down to other business. Uh, there is informational budget dates that I do encourage everybody to look over. Put on your calendar.
Yes, please.
Um, so our upcoming workshop on the twenty first, um. We do have quite a bit to cover. Is everybody fine with the one hour workshop that day?
We get done in an hour?
I think we should be able to.
Yeah, so I'm going to have, um, there'll be a discussion on historical society. I do have a contract written up for the storage. Um, so we can go over that and then we'll be able to sign that contract that evening and then I would like to flip Connor into. Um, a full time employee come August first, so I'll have some numbers for you guys. Um, and that's just through twenty six or through twenty twenty five, we can review twenty six during budget, so I think an hour is. Is fine, and if we've got to continue the historical society. Is fine, and if we've gotta continue the Historical Society, that, I mean, that's a big.
Yeah.
Thought, you know, at least we'll have some direction on.
Well, if we wanna go right up until the meeting five, otherwise four thirty.
I would say four thirty, yeah.
Four thirty, that way we have a gap in between the. Get up and stretch. Um, and then the other, um, the other, last item on the other business, um, is whether or not we would like to prepare a. Thank you letter for the City of Winlock.
Do you wanna add that to the workshop?
We definitely can, if, if everybody's.
There's a timing issue on it?
Yeah, I just think, um. Yeah, it's, there's not really a timing issue on it, but we, I had already had something typed up. Um, I just think being able to send out something, a big, a thank you to Winlock, they've been there to help us, their staff's been there to help us. Um, so just having one out. That we would send to Winlock would be nice.
It's really nice that they've helped us without us look, feeling like we're a revenue center for them.
Yeah.
Which is amazing.
Yeah. So, um, I use Chad to type something up. I don't know if you guys want to use something like this, if you guys. Want to do something different, um, or slow down. This is just a really brief thank you note. Um, their staff's been amazing to work with. Um, I worked with their public works. I know. The situation that we had, um, while John was on vacation was actually a pretty big situation. Um, and Jay was able to handle it like seamlessly, and he was just able to call. Winlock and yeah, they were right there to help. This, their, their staff in their office is great. I mean, I. You know, I can reach out to them with questions or, you know, do you guys have a policy for this already? They do the same with us. Um, working with Robert over in. Their um permits has been great. So I think just sending them a thank you note would be nice.
Like, it's, it is nice, and it's nice to see two neighboring cities not feuding, not. Like, just coming together to genuinely help each other out of just kindness.
Yes, that's why, that's why I wanted, I wanted to get your guys' approval. I'll put it on letterhead, so if you guys could just come down and like tomorrow or whatever, if you guys are good with this and. We can just send it to Winlock.
That we could post in the. I mean, just as a. I'm asking, I don't know.
That I'm not sure, I'd have to look into it, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you guys are good with it, I can look into that too.
Does anybody have any comments?
Thing is, so. They felt.
Yes.
And offering that if there's a time where we can return the support, that's what I wanted to see, which is great.
Yeah, and I know in the past we, we had helped them out, so it's just nice to see.
But they were a revenue center for us.
Yeah, yeah. Thankfully, they are not taking advantage, but it is just nice. Like, I've lived in other communities where. You know, your neighboring city's like, I'm not gonna help you, I'm gonna do everything I can to just run you into the ground. So it's nice to have neighboring cities that really do have each other's back. Nobody wants any changes to that? Okay. Okay.
Well, has that on letterhead? If you guys could just sing by tomorrow at some point. I'm gonna put Jamie Beaver.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and move into public input. Um, so public input on anything, you got three minutes. Anybody wanna come up to the podium?
First of all, can you send me a notice when the bike is officially auctioned? Like, just let me know that. Matt has forbidden me from auctioning on it and trying to just beat the crap out of it, um, so. Just let me know when that is done. I just wanted to ask if we have any update on the jailhouse and whether we certified auction of that yet or not. Or is that still?
I think we're still in the works on that.
That's good. And then lastly, I wanted to wish everybody a happy Tuesdays. I brought you all. I think you should be good with this, but if not.
Yeah, we'll get that, yes.
Anybody else? Yes.
Yes, my name is Charles, Charles Snook. A letter from the city. For uh. Um, my buses. I have a bus that I bought from a place I used to work and I have it facing the park. I put a big park over it now. I asked the mayor at the time, I think five years ago, about putting it on my property. Okay, that it could be there and now I'm being told that it cannot be there.
Okay, we can definitely dig into that. I know that, um, Sarah had mentioned that to me. Um, so I can actually, and I'll, and I'll go talk to the prior mayor too. And get his information as well. Um, I know there, there, I think a lot of those will crop up where it was, hey, we, we had been given permission. And the main thing is, we just, we need everything to look nice, so as long as it's not an eyesore, then we're good. Um, and it doesn't, yes.
Been wanting to buy a power washer to wash it. That on it, but. It's been very rough. I just haven't been able to.
Yeah.
There's no written agreement.
Yeah.
There is not a written agreement, no.
Okay. Um, and what was the intended use?
My use is this for storage.
Okay.
So there would need to be a permit.
If you put a fence, well, if you put a fence in front of it.
What we told him, yeah.
Even, even a short fence, I mean, if you, you know, to follow the letter of the law. Then it's your backyard and it's none of our business. Doesn't matter how tall it is.
Yeah, that's what we told your wife, is April your wife?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we told her. Yeah, oh, hi. Yeah, that offense would need to go up. It's, it's a bus and then two, several, two camping trailers. That are not, um, I guess you guys are working on them.
One of them is, belongs to my brother and he's homeless and he said that he is kinda coming to get it as soon as he can, so. Yeah, that's the one right beside the bus, and the other one is just. Not being used at all, so.
And are they, they're registered and everything?
No, they are not.
Yeah, that was the, the code violation that was sent.
Yeah, so they.
If you put it behind a fence, then it can be whatever it needs to be.
I, I have moved that one. Uh, mine to the side of my house. And it is almost completely blocked, so.
It's off, off the street and on your car.
Beside my house is, when we bought our house, it said it was RV parking, so. It was all, it's all gravel right beside the house.
I think that's registered RV parking.
Behind his house?
I mean, if you had. If you've got parking on your property for, I don't, I, I haven't seen it, so I don't wanna speak out of turn.
Kinda like, anything, I'm kinda envisioning like the, the yellow house that, that put in the RV parking next to it. I guess it's not yellow, but the one right across from where Kurt.
If they were operable and, and had um registration, they would be fine where they're at, but because they're not, they need to have a fence around them. And then the bus that I think, believe that would need to be a variance permit, it's something on their property that they're using for storage. Um, there's. And I think it still needs to be behind a fence.
Put a fence in front of it, you're fine.
Yes.
And it doesn't need.
Or, or if you could get a, or if you get a vintage registration for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a two thousand, I think, two thousand one.
Okay, so it is, it's been over twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
You have to register it for, for the first year, and then you can convert it before it expires to vintage to a collector. I don't know if they do that with the bus.
I would assume they would, cuz a lot of people turn them into RVs. And they.
I was told the, uh, mayor at the time, that I eventually, one day I'm a rebuilt motor and it'll be functional. It needs a motorwork. I don't see any time.
You can do whatever you want in your backyard. I think that what the city's asking for is you to make it your backyard. And unfortunately, you're up against the.
The park.
The park, so your backyard is exposed.
Yeah. So that would probably be the easiest, is see if, if there's anybody that can help you guys put up even just a short fence to keep people out of there and. It protects your guys' assets as well, but it just keeps, you know, it is behind a fence.
Which makes it okay with city code.
Exactly. Absolutely. Alright, no executive session this evening, and so I would entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn. Alright, moved by Eric, seconded by Tony. All those in favor? Oppose?
Alright.
One hour flat, congratulations.